Senators, I hope please make sure that you all have copies of the bills on your desk. And we are now on the voting file. And we will proceed then with the first bill, Bill number 293-32COR. The clerks can please read the title.
Bill number 293-32COR is substituted by the author and amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy Morrison, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., R.J. Risfishe, V. Anthony Adams, Michael Lim Tiamko. An act to amend section 61542, subarticle 5 of Article 5, Chapter 61 of Title 21 Guam Code annotated, relative to political signs.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Pass.
Senator Uggan, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Aye.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Pass.
Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis.
Pass.
Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Aye.
Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Aye.
Substitute bill number 293-32COR received 13 ye vote, 1 nay vote. Substitute bill number 293-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 344-32COR.
Bill number 344-32COR is substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. Introduced by Vicente Bense Panglinen. An act to add new subsections E and F to section 21116 of chapter 21, title 5 Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring the Department of Administration to publish information on unclaimed income tax refund checks, and to add a new section 1114 to chapter 1, title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Income Tax Refund Assistance Hotline to be known as the Taxpayer Assistant Claim Support Act of 2014.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, nay. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Pass.
Senator Lim Tiamko, pass. Senator McCready.
Pass.
Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison.
Pass.
Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiamko.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Yes.
Substitute bill number 344-32 received 13 ye vote, 1 nay. Substitute bill number 344-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 306-32COR.
Bill number 306-32COR is amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., an act to appropriate funds to the Office of Veterans Affairs for the implementation of the Guam Veterans Registry as mandated in a public law 32-101.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Aye.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 306-32COR received 14 ye votes. Bill number 306-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 381-32COR.
Bill number 381-32COR is substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., an act to add a new article 24 to chapter 12, part 2, title 10 Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Anesthesiologist Assistant Act.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 381-32 received 14 ye vote. Substitute bill number 381-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 391-32LS.
Bill number 391-32LS is amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations. Introduced by V. Anthony Adams, Tommy Morrison, Chris M. Duennas. An act to amend paragraph 15 of section 3101F of Article 1, Chapter 3 of Title 16 Guam Code annotated, relative to motorcycle license road exams.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Pass.
Senator Lim Tiamko, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Yes.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye.
Bill number 391-32LS received 14 ye votes. Bill number 391-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 399-32COR.
Bill number 399-32COR is substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations. Introduced by R.J. Risfishe. An act to amend section 3219A of Article 2, Chapter 3 of Title 16 Guam Code annotated, relative to updating the current standards of tire safety.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Aye.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 399-32 received 14 ye votes. Substitute bill number 399-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 376-32COR.
Bill number 76-32COR is substituted by the Committee on Rules, Foreign and Micronation Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to add a new section 3105.1 to Article 1, Chapter 3 of Title 22 Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring the completion of an independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 376-32 received 14 ye vote. Substitute bill number 376-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 418-32COR.
Bill number 418-32COR is substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs. Introduced by B.J.F. Cruz. An act to adopt the rules and regulations of the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission concerning certification of peace officers and standards for employing agencies and training institutions to be codified under a new chapter 3 of Title 27 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 418-32 received 14 ye vote. Substitute bill number 418-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 420-32COR.
Bill number 420-32COR is substituted by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD. An act to approve the Guam Commission for Educator Certification, GCEC Rules and Regulations concerning governing the standards of professional conduct for Guam educators and to add a new section 27008.1 and a new subsection i to section 27008, all of chapter 27 of title 17 Guam Code annotated, relative to subpoena and investigative powers of the GCEC.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Senator McCready, aye.
Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Aye.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Madam Speaker, just point of information, we do have an error in the title. Would we need to make that correction or can we just make sure it transmits with a correction?
Can you, can you say?
This is bill 420, Madam Speaker.
Yes. Oh, the double, the double the, okay. All right, so noted. The double, I say. And I also, yes, also please note that in line four where it says "as contained" and exhibit one that there is an exhibit, we're not going to make that mistake, but they are available for you to review again, is exactly what was in the committee report. Thank you.
Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Senator Yamashita, aye.
Senator Siniklis.
Pass.
Senator Siniklis, pass.
Substitute bill number 420-32 received 13 ye vote, 1 nay. Substitute bill 420-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 2428-32COR.
Bill number 428-32COR introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to add a new subsection E to section 8121 of Article 1, Chapter 8, Title 4 Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing a parity in the retirement annuity of the Attorney General of Guam and the public auditor of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Aye.
Senator Lim Tiamko, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 428-32 received 14 ye vote. Bill number 428-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 429-32COR.
Bill number 429-32COR introduced by Michael F. Keis-Siniklis. An act to add a new article 5A to chapter 3, title 11 Guam Code annotated, relative to authorizing the appointment of deputies to enforce Guam's alcoholic beverage control laws.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, nay. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, nay. Senator Lim Tiamko.
No.
Senator Lim Tiamko, nay. Senator McCready.
No.
Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison.
No.
Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Risfishe.
Yes.
Senator Risfishe, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 429-32COR received 88 votes, 6 nay votes. Bill number 429-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 358-32COR.
Bill number 358-32COR is amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. Introduced by Michael F. Keis-Siniklis. An act to amend section 79501 of Article 5, Chapter 79 of Title 21 Guam Code annotated, and to add a new item 13 to section 22425Q of chapter 22, title 5 Guam Code annotated, relative to funding the restoration and redevelopment of the municipality of Pagana.
Roll call.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, on page 3, the date, I believe we changed the effective date as an amendment to October 1, 2015, but the enclosed version still reflects some 2014.
Thank you, Senators, duly noted.
Senator Tom Adams.
Aye.
Senator Tom Adams, aye. Senator Tony Adams.
Yes.
Senator Tony Adams, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duennas.
Aye.
Senator Duennas, aye. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Pass.
Senator Lim Tiamko, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes.
Aye.
Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Risfishe.
Pass.
Senator Risfishe, pass. Senator Rodriguez.
Pass.
Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
No.
Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Yamashita. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Lim Tiamko.
Pass.
Senator Lim Tiamko, pass.
Pass.
Senator Limtiaco, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, pass. Senator Rodriguez. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, nay. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Rusfischel.
Bill number 358-32COR received 7 yea votes, 7 nay votes. Bill 358-32 failed to receive the required number of votes to pass. Bill number 345-32.
Bill number 345-32COR as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. Introduced by Vicente Bense Pangolinan. An act to amend Section 3 and Section 4, and to repeal Section 6, all of Public Law 21-130, relative to authorizing the Department of Land Management to exchange private property taken for the construction of the agitumatic highway with government land, and to add a new item 2 to Section 1U of Chapter 5 of Public Law 32-181, relative to allocating $20,000 to the Department of Land Management to conduct appraisals of government of Guam properties.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco.
Aye.
Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfischel.
Okay.
Senator Rusfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Bill number 345-32COR received 14 yea votes. Bill number 345-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 400-32COR.
Bill number 400-32COR introduced by R.J. Rusfischel. An act to add new Chapters 51 and 52 to Title VII of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting the Uniform Enforcement of Foreign Judgments Act UEFJA, and the Uniform Foreign Money Judgments Recognition Act UFMJRA.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco.
Aye.
Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis.
Pass.
Senator Sniklis.
Bill number 400-32COR received 13 yea votes and one nay. Bill number 400-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 424, I mean 224-32COR.
Bill number 224-32COR as substituted by the author, and further substituted by the Committee on Roles, and further substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by T.C. Ada, R.J. Rusfischel, B.J. F. Cruz. An act to amend Articles 9 and 12 of Chapter 5, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to amending legal and contractual remedies in the procurement law, in the Guam procurement law.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco.
Aye.
Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Substitute bill number 224-32COR received 14 yea votes. Substitute bill number 224-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 402-32COR.
Bill number 402-32COR introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to add a new Section 103121 to Chapter 103, Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to providing for the coverage of blood and blood derivatives by a health insurance company or healthcare provider contracted to provide private sector small or large group health
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Limtiaco.
Pass.
Senator Limtiaco, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfischel. Senator Rusfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Limtiaco. Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Bill number 402-32COR received 12 yea votes, two nay votes. Bill number 402-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 412-32COR.
Bill number 412-32COR introduced by Frank Biegen Jr., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An act to amend Subsections 23 and 24, and to add a new subsection 25 to Section 3218A of Article 2, Chapter 3 of Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring abortion providers to include gestational age in abortion reports.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, aye. Senator Limtiaco.
Aye.
Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Pass.
Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rusfischel.
Yes.
Senator Rusfischel, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis. Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Bill 412-32COR received 13 yea votes, one nay. Bill number 412-32 is duly passed by this body. So Bill 421-32, please also note that there is an attachment that will be sent for "as contained" Bill 421.
And attached.
And attached. If you want to view it, we have it. That's the Rose and Rex, yeah, the exhibit for the Rose and Rex. 421, Bill 421. Yeah, I had it in the committee report. Yeah. Yeah, but there is an exhibit. I was reading from the exhibit today, so. If anyone would really like to have a copy, of course, of Exhibit A, you can just, you know, make the request to the, and it is in the committee report as well. Okay, so we'll proceed. Roll call, I mean, sorry, reading of 421-32.
Bill number 421-32COR as amended by the Committee on Education, Public Library and Women's Affairs. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to approve amendments to existing rules and regulations of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification in Chapter 8, Title 5A Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations.
Roll call, oh, yes, Senator. Yes, Senator?
Madam Speaker, if I may, I just want, for clarity's sake, the last time something like this happened, and we said the exhibit was attached, there was a difference when the bill was transmitted, and I just want to do it for, as a matter of technicality, to make sure that the exhibit is attached. It's not here in front of us. I know it was in the committee report, but it's really important. So, I don't know how, I mean, if we proceed, do we motion?
No, when the bill is sent, of course, it'll be sent with the attachment.
The last time this happened, I, it was asked that the report be attached. I'm just saying because we had a discrepancy.
And, you know, and of course, if anyone would really like to have a copy to see, a copy of that Exhibit A, we can recess and we can have the copies sent to everybody. I just want to, but you're right, you are absolutely right where we did say that and it wasn't. But in this case, there is an exhibit and we can provide copies for everyone, of course, to actually see, and it'll be, of course, on our website as well. Would you like, then, to get a copy?
Not withstanding, we'll vote, but I just wanted to make sure. Madam Speaker, I just want, we can do a not withstanding and proceed to vote, but I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record.
I mean, you're right, we, we can do that. Senator, we just passed one four-twenty, and it says the exact same thing, Exhibit O, so it has an exhibit, and, but, you know, we can, of course, you know, to make sure that everyone, you know, has an opportunity to either get a copy, if you'd like to get a copy, two, if you want to be able to view it, it's definitely in the committee report. So, let me take, just briefly, take a recess and I'll speak to legal counsel. Bill number four-twelve-dash-thirty-two COR received fourteen yea votes, bill number Senators, okay, we're back into session. Senator Rispisho, I know it's unusual at this time during the voting time, but can we just go ahead and make a notwithstanding motion, then, that since we voted on four-twenty without exhibit, that we will then have to do a revote, and probably later, because they're going to be making copies of it. If everyone has four-twenty-one, the exhibit, then that we can proceed with. Senator? You're right, so you could, well, we're going to have to do a revote of that until such time then that you get the exhibit, because the clerks have not made copies of it right now to give everyone a copy. So we're going to avoid that voting then of four-twenty until.
Okay, so, so, given your guidance, Madam Speaker, I move that we reconsider the action of the body on the vote taken for bill four-twenty, so that when we do vote on bill four-twenty, they would be an attachment that's actually attached to the bill.
Okay, no objections? So, order.
Anyway, that's your bill, so.
Thank you.
Bill number four-twenty-one-dash-thirty-two COR is amended by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to approve amendments to existing rules and regulations of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification in Chapter Eight, Title Five-A, Guam Administrative Rules and
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, I. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Duennius.
Yes.
Senator Duennius, I. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, I. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, I. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Bill number four-twenty-one-dash-thirty-two COR received fourteen yea votes. Bill number four-twenty-one-dash-thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number four-twenty-three-dash-thirty-two COR.
Bill number four-twenty-three-dash-thirty-two COR is amended on the floor, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to add a new item eighteen to section four-one-zero-two-A of Article One of Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the personnel needs of the Attorney General of Guam and the public auditor.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, I. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Duennius.
Yes.
Senator Duennius, I. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, I. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, I. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Bill number four-twenty-three-dash-thirty-two COR received fourteen yea votes. Bill number four-twenty-three-dash-thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number four-twenty-six-dash-thirty-two COR.
Bill number four-twenty-six-dash-thirty-two COR is substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns of Future Generations, introduced by T.C. Ada. An act to adopt forty-nine CFR Part One-eighty to ensure that the Department of Revenue and Taxation's Motor Carrier Safety Assistance Program remains compliant with its federal mandates relative to the safe operations of commercial motor vehicles.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, I. Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Duennius.
Yes.
Senator Duennius, I. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, I. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, I. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Substitute bill number four-twenty-six-dash-thirty-two COR received fourteen yea votes. Substitute bill number four-twenty-six-dash-thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number four-zero-five-dash-thirty-two COR.
Bill number four-zero-five-dash-thirty-two COR is amended on the floor, introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, V. Anthony Ada, Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Michael F. Siniklis, Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to amend section four-one-zero-eight-C-two, Chapter Four, Title Four, Guam Code Annotated, relative to sick leave.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, I. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Duennius.
Yes.
Senator Duennius, I. Senator Limteaco.
Pass.
Senator Limteaco, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho.
Yes.
Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, I. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, I. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, I. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Bill number four-zero-five-dash-thirty-two received fourteen yea votes. Bill number four-zero-five-dash-thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number four-twenty-four-dash-thirty-two LS. Four, which one?
Four-twenty-three, master.
We don't, yeah, but. Four-twenty-three, yes, it's fourteen.
Bill number four-twenty-four-dash-thirty-two LS introduced by R.J. Rispisho, T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to amend section three-two-two-six-H-two of Article Two, Division One, Chapter Three of Title Nine, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to clarifying that concrete and solid metal walls are acceptable as perimeter fencing for a commercial quarantine
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, I. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, I. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, I. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, I. Senator Duennius.
Aye.
Senator Duennius, I.
Nay.
Nay, I'm sorry. Senator Duennius, nay. Senator Limteaco.
Pass.
Senator Limteaco, nay, pass. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, I. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, I. Senator Munia Barnes.
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes, I. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, I. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis.
Yes.
Senator Siniklis, I. Speaker Wampat.
Good.
Speaker Wampat, I. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Limteaco. Senator Limteaco, nay. Senator Rodriguez.
Bill number four-twenty-four-dash-thirty-two LS received ten yea votes, four nay. Bill, bill number four-twenty-four-dash-thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill number four-thirty-dash-thirty-two COR.
Bill number four-thirty-dash-thirty-two COR introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to appropriate the sum of fifty-three thousand six dollars from the remaining funds not obligated pursuant to public law thirty-two-dash-oh-six-five to the Guam Police Department to purchase mobile radios for police vehicles.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Senator, one moment.
Madam Speaker, I thought the language was to be changed, that it was going to appropriate the balance of funds.
When I made the presentation, I had conferred with OFB, and they said that the language here was appropriate. I mean, I did check with OFB first.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye.
We got one more Frank besides this one. Duenas? No, no, this is the bill 430.
430?
Yes.
Senator Duenas, pass. Senator Lintiaco.
Aye.
Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Duenas.
Aye.
Bill number 430-32, received 14 ye votes. Bill number 430-32 is duly passed by this body. On bill 420, all of you were given the copies of the exhibit, so we're going to do a revote Yes, please.
Bill number 420-32COR, as substituted by the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD, an act to approve the Guam Commission for Educator Certification rules and regulations governing the standards of professional conduct for Guam educators, and to add a new section 27008.1 and a new subsection I to section 27008, all of chapter 27 of Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to subpoena and investigative powers of the GCEC.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Aye.
Senator Uggan, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duenas.
Aye.
Senator Duenas, aye. Senator Lintiaco.
Aye.
Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho.
Yes.
Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, nay. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita.
Yes.
Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Uggan.
Bill number 420-32COR, with the attachment, but the votes are 13 yays, one nay. Bill number 420-32 is duly passed by this body. That has exhausted the list that we have so far, so we're going to... Are you staying?
We could have a month. It's tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, we're going to do it tomorrow, then. So we're going to recess until nine tomorrow morning.